But touch everyone's minds, Lord, no matter what direction we're coming from, Lord God, no matter how we think, you have a perfect outcome, Lord God. It may not look good at the beginning, God, but we're praying that you work it all together for good of the people of South Bend. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for that invocation. At this time, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. We'll now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Mrs. Jones, would you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Yes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of January 11, 2021, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moving. Second it. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The Subcommittee on Minutes have been approved. I would like to make the announcement, if there's anyone on our meeting this evening for Bill, I mean Resolution 21-03, that resolution has been tabled until March 22, 2021. There is no special business at this time. We will have a report from city officers. Mayor James Mueller will provide a statement or statements of finances and general conditions of the city in his annual address to the council, and his address will focus on financial matters and other related issues. After the mayor's presentation, council members will have the opportunity to ask two questions. I will first start with the First District Representative, Kenneth Lee, and follow by the second, the third, and thereafter. At this time, I would like to introduce our mayor, Mayor James Mueller.
Thank you, President White, and good evening, council. Bear with me for one moment as I try to bring up the presentation here. All right, that should be uploading. And, you know, as you know, this is the annual financial update and general conditions of the city, what's commonly called the state of the city. We weren't able to do last year due to the pandemic that emerged, and this year we were waiting to see if we might have a celebration of post-COVID-19 for the state of the city, but unfortunately, the uncertainty with that will likely need to do either an outdoor event when the weather warms up a little bit with social distancing and some limitations for safety, or do it online like this. So, we're still trying to figure out the best way to schedule that, and stay tuned. And for tonight, we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. The financial update, I know, is not always the most exciting topic that we deal with as a city. So, first, just want to remind us of some of the key indicators that we look at in the city, and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the years about population and how to get our population growing again, as well as how do we get our incomes to rise across the city, not just for the more affluent households. So, you know, here you can see the incomes, different metrics, median per capita, as well as defined as the poverty rate. And before COVID-19 and the corresponding economic headwinds, we were doing fairly well in terms of raising standards. We need to do a lot more to catch up to the state and national averages, but we were at least heading in the right direction. And so, the other thing to note here is the 20, normally, we have last year's data by now from the federal government, but because the census was last year and they have not finalized that, there are a lot of these numbers we had to take from Oxford Economics Group that are projections, but, you know, these could be drastically different when we get the official data from the Department of Labor Statistics and other places to see where we actually fall. But this was the path that Oxford Economics saw us on and has projected, but, you know, things could be dramatically different given all the upheaval of the previous year. So, you know, the first thing that's going to impact not just what happens in our community or what happens in our economy here in the city, but also the city's finances, is how can we get the virus under control? And here, I show the cases projected by the average of models by the CDC for the next month or so. And, you know, the good news here is that they project that, for the most, most models project that the cases will continue to decline or stay relatively steady. There are some indications that by the, after where this graph ends up, where by the end of March, the UK variant that's more contagious will be the dominant strain of COVID-19 within the United States. So, you know, this is good news that we have this on the horizon, you know, this period where we'll continue to hopefully decline, but then we may see an uptick in the contagious factor of the virus due to the UK strain taking hold here locally. But, most of the projections then also show that because we're distributing the vaccine at a reasonable rate, that we hopefully will avoid getting back up to the level of cases and hospitalizations that we saw at the end of November and early December. So, we've, you know, I've said this many times, we are literally in a race here because these new variants are adapting and becoming, you know, more contagious. So, we really need to get this vaccine out to as many people as possible, and that will help protect us from the next surge. Then, you know, how do we get the vaccine out? This comes from McKinsey &amp; Company Insights, and on the left, you'll see the various promises of vaccine from different suppliers, and the two that have been distributed locally and across the country have been the Moderna and Pfizer. This is a little dated, it's the end of January, I believe since then, because there were six doses per vial, as opposed to the five. Some of this, it's been upgraded a little bit, 120 instead of 100, as you see there. But, if you look at this, by the end of June, if it was just Moderna and Pfizer were available, it would take till the end of June just to get through phases 1A through 1C there on the right, and so, the number of doses that are required. So, we're really hopeful that one of these other vaccines will come online. The most promising that's moving through the authorization process right now is the Johnson &amp; Johnson One-Shot Vaccine, and a lot's been said about it's not as effective as these other two that are already out and being distributed, but, you know, that's one that will enable us to really have, if that is able to come online by the end of March or early April, would enable us to get most of the population vaccinated by the June timeline. And so, there's a lot of uncertainty with how fast, you know, how many vaccines will we have, how fast will it get out, and how many people will be willing to take it. There's been an estimate that, you know, there's 100 million skeptical Americans about whether they will take advantage of the vaccine. And so, there's also questions about how much do these new strains reduce the effectiveness of our existing vaccine. So, those questions create a lot of uncertainty for when we can say, when will we reach herd immunity, or when can we, when can we claim we're approaching the end of the pandemic? And that's the graph on the right. And as you see there, there are two lines, one was their estimate from November, and then the darker blue line is an estimate from mid-January. And you see that they're a little less, because of the slow vaccine rollout at the end of the year, beginning of the year, they became a little less optimistic about how quickly we would reach herd immunity. And this is based off of mostly the vaccine distribution plan, not necessarily the immunity that we're building up as cases spread throughout our communities. So, a lot of uncertainty, but by, you know, there's a good chance that we could reach that, if you look at the peaks there, you know, it's roughly the July to September timeline, and, but that means, but it also means that there are reasonably good chances that it could happen before that. Unfortunately, there are reasonably good chances that people think that if the variants keep changing and people are hesitant to take the vaccine on a large-scale basis, that this could extend longer than, we're all ready to be done with it, and so, hopefully, we see that we're closer to the left side of that curve, and we're, we reach that by summertime. So, this has had a tremendous impact, and I believe I shared this with council, and these projections for the economy by Oxford Economics that were done in late spring last year. And there were a number of scenarios, these represented the two most likely bounds scenario. So, there was the optimistic strong growth rebound, which is the top light blue graph, and then there was the muted recovery where things were slower, and as the dark blue. And when we went through budgeting purposes, we split the difference and said, you know, let's plan for being somewhere in between the growth rebound scenario and the muted recovery scenario. And so, Congress passing the CARES Act last spring really helped us get closer to the growth rebound scenario. So, this red line is what we've seen, you know, what we've seen over the past year, and in the fourth quarter, I believe, is still a projection, it hasn't been verified. But, we had a strong recovery out of the CARES Act, and then the lack of additional action at the federal level through the fall led to a little bit of a stalling out, and it's more pronounced on the employment side on the right graph there. So, you see that things were going strong up in the third quarter, and then the fourth quarter, the recovery slowed a little bit. So, this is, you know, having the stimulus that passed at the end of December, as well as the talks now for renewed stimulus, that we're talking about the difference between going to the dark blue line, or worse, or getting back up to where we want to be, higher up and back into a growth mode. So, I'll quickly just share some 2020 highlights. You know, the COVID-19 response took a lot of priority, both in terms of the virus containment, but also in figuring out how can we weather this storm and make it to better times. And so, we're proud of all the work and thankful for the council helping us make funds, both grants and loans, available to our entrepreneurs and local small businesses, as well as money for those who found themselves in a place of vulnerability, where having trouble with rental and just paying the bills, making ends meet, and putting food on the table. And then finally, we were able to put a lot of federal, this was enabled a lot from the CARES Act dollars, but put those to making resources available for the most vulnerable of our residents who find themselves experiencing homelessness. So, that's, we really had to adapt on the fly there and do as much as possible, and of course, we started out this year with, and thankful for the council's support for the Restaurant Innovation Grant Program, and we'll have to continue to monitor how to support our local businesses here as we get through this dark winter and get back to normal as soon as we're able to. We also were able to continue moving forward with some of the programming dollars that we prioritize every year in the community and neighborhood investment, and the library, to support the library project here at the main branch, that had been supported by a previous council, of course, and, but it finally went forward with favorable interest rates, and so, we're excited to see that project continue, as well as our home repair and workforce development. And then recently, we had announced the winners of the ALIVE program grants, that we're really excited to see how the community embraces this and helps us figure out how to move forward and build community and reduce gun violence among our youth. And then finally, we're very proud of the work we did partnering with the schools. I think, at least during my time in the city, this is the strongest relationship between the city, both the administrations, both school and city, as well as their, the school board and common council members. So, we're excited about that. We're also excited about the ability for us to expand access to internet and receiving that grant to put 2,000 at-home internet packages for two years, as well as 2,000 hotspots for Wi-Fi. So, the pandemic exposed the need and the divide in digital access and resources, and we were very pleased to get that grant and grateful, and excited to work with the schools on getting that out the door. The other piece that, thank President White and Councilmember Warner for really spearheading the historic joint meeting with the school board, and that was not too long before we all had to go into, had to stop seeing each other and have those large type of gatherings. So, once we're able to meet again in person, we hope we can build off that progress and have more of these kind of joint meetings in person, you know, we can look at doing other types of things as well. And I know there's a commitment from both the school board and the common council to continue to look at how to formalize the partnership between the city and the schools. And then finally, you know, we really did, you know, during the middle of the, you know, the worst of the lockdown or the stay-at-home orders, there was a push to come up with a long-term capital and operations plan for the school, and make sure that they had the resources to be successful going forward. So, as part of that whole push, we were, we had pushed trying to make sure there was a full study of how the schools can be more efficient at utilizing the resources they do have, also making sure that they form a strategic plan that guides these decisions, and then also make sure that there is an external community advisory group that expands the stakeholders beyond just who normally comes and engages in, you know, in school board meetings or engages with the school administration. So, you know, they've moved forward, the schools have moved forward with all of those pieces, and they reported out the efficiency study late last fall. They've shared a draft strategic plan, they continue to work on that to finalize that, and I believe they formed this, the community advisory group toward the end of last year as well. So, they're moving forward on all those things, and some of the individual items from those pieces are starting to move as well. So, it's critical that our schools take the bold action necessary to help turn the schools around, and that's what all of these items are intended to help get us there. And, you know, from the city side, it's one of the challenging pieces is, and this came up when I was running for mayor, they said, "You need to do this with the schools." And, you know, of course, we all know here that we're two completely separate entities, and there's no formal authority that either the mayor or the common council has over the school system, but we can collaborate and we need to strengthen that partnership. So, all of these pieces, the meetings, the formalized, the partnership agreements, and these shared plans are important for getting us all rowing in the same direction and making sure that both our schools and neighborhoods are successful going forward. So, here's getting into the finances, the summary by fund. You know, what you'll notice here probably strongest is first, the big drop in capital project funds, and that's by design. Capital projects are, you're meant to spend the funds for capital, and, you know, you're not wanting, it's not an operation-based, so you're not wanting to, you know, hold the same kind of reserves or balance that you do. You allocate the funds, and you want them to be spent as the capital project moves forward. The other, the other big item is the other enterprise in terms of deficit, and that's more of an accounting change, the EMS. There is an EMS fund that's been combined with the general fund, and part of that's due to how federal reimbursement and other things are going, that it really just no longer makes sense to be its own fund. And then, it'll appear that there are a lot of, I guess, positive balances for general fund and income, or this is just general fund and special revenue funds. And, you know, the general fund, there's, there was one, that's where the transfer for the EMS fund went into, because that's where our EMS and FIRE is primarily paid out of, as well as we receive the CARES Act distribution, the 3.3 million or so that came in, as well as, you know, there's well-documented our shortage of officers relative to budget for 2020. So, all of those pieces and others go into these net balances that you see here. There's also, this is the accounting for what's currently in the bank at the end of the year, and some funds that spill over or projects that spill over into the new year do get encumbered. So, that doesn't mean that we have a net balance of eight and a half million, for example, in the general fund. There is a fair amount of funds that have been encumbered that are still going to be spent. So, a good example of that is one that got done at the end of the year, where common council approved the Restaurant Innovation Grant Program, and we were able to encumber those funds, but I don't believe they actually got out the door by December 31. So, that's one example of many, where the dollars look like they're in the bank account, and they are, but they are accounted for and will, you know, it's not a surplus of dollars that we have there. So, now I'll just quickly go through the financial position, and, you know, we look at this as four main parts, the liquidity, our debt load, what assets we have in terms of capital, and then how are our operations doing relative to revenues and expenditures. So, we'll start with liquidity, and here, again, you'll see through the difficult year, we ended up with slightly more cash on hand in 2020 than at the end of 2019. Again, this is somewhat misleading, because those encumbrances, as I mentioned earlier, it's up to 55 million. So, if you subtracted 55 million, that's closer to when we show you the charts at budget time, the budget versus expected revenue, and where we expect to be cash on hand at the end of the year. So, there are some timing issues that show this looks like we strongly increased our, or not, not too strongly, 10 million out of 300 or 290 million, but, you know, in a bad year, it looks like we've added more cash on hand than we likely will when all of the bills are paid from 2020. But looking at us compared to other cities, we're in a strong position, and our cash position that's been strong for a number of years is the primary driver for our bond rating, that's AA, that we'll get to. So, the cash on hand is important for us to be able to continue to lever, to leverage debt at a low cost. So, going into debt, we have the two main types, the governmental and business type. The business type are like the enterprise funds, so the ones that are meant and designed to be paid for by fees or revenue coming in for their service, and this is the, you know, what we think of, the utilities, so wastewater, sewer, water, and solid waste and the building department. So, there's a lot of, in our infrastructure-heavy enterprise funds, there's a lot of debt driven by those projects, and there will likely need to be debt issued in the coming years. Um, and there, there will likely need to be, uh, debt, uh, issued in the coming years when we, when we, ever we do finalize the, the long-term control plan, uh, for wastewater, for example, uh, there will be a number of capital projects that we won't be able to finance, uh, on an annual basis. And we'll need to look at, uh, debt financing to, to get done. And then there's, uh, all the other types of, of debt, uh, financing that, that we've done over the years, whether it's, was carried over from, uh, redevelopment, uh, districts or the parks, uh, debt financing, the, the library we talked about and, and others goes into, to the rest of it. But, uh, you know, total, total obligations that we have year to year has stayed very steady. And this has been, uh, you know, in many ways by design, we, we try to, for, for as much as possible, try to match, um, the, you know, debt that's falling off with new debt that we issue. And over time, you see that the, on the yellow line, our percentage of total expenditures going to debt service ha- has dropped, uh, and is the, been the lowest. Um, 2020 was the lowest. Uh, it's not, as you see, not audited yet, but lowest, uh, has it been in, in a number of years. So we're, we know that there is, uh, there is capacity for us to, to issue debt. And like I said, there will be a number of, of infrastructure things in particular that, that we'll need to, uh, pay attention to in the, the coming years. And this is a similar, uh, similar measure, debt per capita. Um, you know, our population's been growing modestly, so not only has our, our debt been relatively, uh, stable in, in terms of debt service payments, but also our, our population has been growing modestly over a number of years. So you see, you see a drop-off there as well, being just barely the lowest in, in a decade. So here, again, you see we've, we fall into, uh, reasonably competitive with other second-class cities, um, a little bit higher than Mishwaka, but well below, uh, you know, what some would call the, you know, more, the really high-growth, uh, cities around Indianapolis like, uh, Fishers and, and Noblesville and, and Carmel. So, uh, there's, you know, this is a, you can look at debt in any number of ways, it can be a sign, debt by itself doesn't tell the whole picture. It can be a sign of, of a city that's struggling, or it can be a sign of a city that's moving in the right direction. The key is what is the debt spent on? If you're spending debt to, to try to keep the lights on, that's obviously a sign of, of a, of a troubled city. If you're investing in, uh, capital assets or, or smart investments to, to lead to growth, uh, over time, you know, then you're in a much better position and, and you're leveraging debt the way you should be leveraging debt. So that's what we aim to do. We're not looking to, uh, you, use debt to plug holes in, uh, you know, operations budget, but there are a lot of capital investments that do need, uh, us to take advantage of, of debt financing to make happen. And this is, uh, this is something that we're very proud of, that we're a double A bond rating, uh, as a city. And there are a couple others now that have joined us as second-class cities in Indiana, uh, with a double A bond rating. But, uh, this is what enables us to get very competitive rates, uh, with any, uh, debt that we issue. So this is important to keeping those annual payments for debt service down, uh, for the same level of, of capital projects that we need to invest in. So now I'll go quickly into capital assets. And, and here you, you see that we have, uh, a little over a billion dollars if you look at how much it costs to invest in all the capital over, uh, the many decades that we've accumulated it. Um, if you depreciate it over time, our, our net book value now is just, uh, over 500 million, uh, dollars, uh, worth, uh, of assets, capital assets. And the average useful life remaining on these assets is, uh, just under 17 years. And so, uh, if, if it were a straight-line depreciation, or, you know, that 502 million is depreciated over 17 years in a straight, uh, line way, um, that would require us just to keep up, uh, at least 30 million a year in new capital investment. Uh, a lot of, some of these assets, uh, do depreciate faster than, than that. So, uh, you, we actually need to, to be investing slightly more to, to stay where we need to be. And as you see throughout the, the past decade here, we've been, for the most part, above that 30 million, uh, mark. And so that's the, that is the sustainable, uh, amount of investment. We need to continue to, to work the budget each year and, and you see a, a spike in 2019. Part of that is, uh, bond and, and, uh, other, uh, you know, timing expenditures. If you, if you were to go back and look at our budget, it would be, uh, it would likely be a lot smoother than, than what you see in actual timing of the expenditures. And then finally, we'll, we'll get into the, uh, the operations budget here. Um, and again, you see at the, at the top line that a, a little misleading in the general fund, um, the eight and a, eight and a half, uh, million dollars. Again, there, there are, uh, a, a number of, of, uh, encumbered expenses that haven't gone out the door, uh, by the end of the year, um, as well as, uh, some, some shuffling of, uh, you know, when we got the CARES Act distribution, um, that hadn't been planned for in, in the, in the general fund. So when we look at all of our operating funds together, uh, it'll start, it, it starts to look, uh, more balanced, especially when you include those obligations that have, uh, not gone out the door yet. Um, the other, uh, the other main piece, I, I guess you'll say, is, uh, solid waste operations. This has been an issue, uh, for two or s- two-plus years now. And, uh, we kicked the can down the road, uh, in December, uh, by issuing, uh, a loan to cover operations. And we just said, "We don't like to co- we don't like to issue debt to cover operations," and we don't. And so we've got to find a way to remedy this, this, uh, issue. And, uh, that will be part of our, our longer-term conversations, uh, about, uh, operations and, and revenue for these enterprise funds that, that we'll have upcoming. Uh, the other piece that, you know, the, on the utility side, water and, and sewer, um, their, their operations are, are very healthy, uh, relative to, uh, you know, where we are in solid waste. But, uh, the, the issue is they're, they're capital-heavy. So the major cost on the utility bill every month, a large portion of it is the, the, the debt service that we're paying off, uh, for the first phase of the long-term control plan. And a large portion of what we're gonna have to invest in, in the coming years is gonna be to cover the projects, uh, in, uh, associated with the, the long-term control plan. And this is a, a federal government mandate that's unfunded. And, uh, so, you know, a lot of this is, uh, being driven at a level that, uh, that is outside of our control. Of course, we're, continue to, to work to renegotiate that down to a more affordable, uh, level than, than what the original plan called for. But even with the more affordable plan that we hope they will, uh, agree with us on, uh, it will still involve, uh, substantial investments on behalf of the city. So those are, they're the main, uh, main items on, on the operating fund side. Uh, then looking at, at property tax revenue, um, we're expecting, uh, this is, you know, of course, anticipated, uh, for '21, but, uh, we're, we're expecting to be roughly close to where we were four years ago. So if you think of all the economic gains that, that, uh, and, uh, market demand that's occurred, uh, over the past four years, uh, we're, we're expecting to, to be closer to losing those, but not the whole expansion, uh, since the beginning of the Great Recession. So that's good, you know, it's not quite a, as, uh, big of a drop as, as, uh, we had thought. And also to note, we, this, the property tax includes, uh, what was called the fiscal curve, or when the, uh, school, when, when the school's debt was no longer, uh, able to go beyond the property tax caps, uh, beginning last year, uh, that, that hit is, is factored in, and you see that drop from the 2018 paid 2019 to the 2019 paid 2020. And similarly, here, we're expecting, uh, a drop in, in local income tax revenue. Now this is, uh, this is, uh, a budgeting, um, uh, more of a, a budgeting estimate than an actual estimate. If you recall during the budget season, we looked at this as a three-year budget to get back on track, and, and we'll show that in a minute. Uh, but the actual timing of when the income tax, uh, hit from last year will hit us, uh, is actually next year. But instead of having a hu- you know, instead of not preparing for it, we tried to distribute that over and have a smooth, uh, a, a smooth, uh, path back to, uh, balanced budget by, uh, 2023. So that's, uh, so this is later in the year, if you say, "Hey, this is, this number looks smaller than what we actually got." It's not new money, it's just this is what we're budgeting for, to make that smooth, uh, transition through the, the pandemic-related, um, economic hits. And then here's our, our current, or the end-of-year, uh, full-time employee count. And, and we're just over 1,100 employees, roughly a fourth, uh, police, uh, police department officers and, and civilian, uh, support staff, uh, public works team and, uh, is almost another fourth. Fire is almost another fourth. And then you have, uh, a mixture between, uh, venue parks and arts and, and the, the greater community investment team. Um, and then finally, the, the balance is the, uh, the, the operations, uh, general government that would include, uh, the mayor's office, the common council, um, the finance team, central services, uh, INT and, and legal. So all, all the things that go into, uh, making the internal operations of the city run, uh, would be included in that, that general government. And this is, uh, how it compares to over time. And, uh, uh, as you see, there, a lot of this is, uh, you know, how, where our employees at the end of the year. And, and as you know, we, we've had some fluctuations with, um, with our, our number of sworn officers in our police department. So as that fluctuates in the timing of the year, um, so does, uh, this, this final count. Uh, there hasn't been, you know, if you look at the budget proposals over the past few years, there, there haven't been, uh, a huge number of new positions, uh, proposed. And so that's what's reflected here. You see very little variation from 2017 to, to 2020 in terms of full-time staff in the city at the end of the year. And here's the, uh, our favorite, the, our health, uh, cost, health insurance cost. And, uh, we had done, uh, fairly good job of, uh, having little bit of cost containment and relief in terms of growth of, of the cost per employee over the past few years. And then, uh, the jump this year, part of this is, is artificial. Uh, their, 2020 was budgeted to, um, to, to, um, spend down some of the, the excess reserves that had, had accumulated. So, you know, in terms of actual cost, it, it's a little, maybe a little misleading in terms of that jump. But nevertheless, there are, uh, an increase of, uh, of health insurance costs for, for our full-time and, and covered, and, and covered part-time employees. So trying to summarize it all up, uh, you know, we like to give the household equivalent of, of what the city's, uh, position is to try to make it more relatable, cause once you start talking millions, I don't, it, it's harder for, for me anyway, to, to start grasping, uh, what it all means. So, you know, we have an annual revenue of, of 269 million. We have, uh, 300 million in, in the bank account or in a, in a, you know, a money market that's very liquid, uh, and able to be accessed. By state law, we're not able to invest this money in, you know, in, in, uh, you know, more, more exotic, uh, investments, very, but, uh, nevertheless, you know, it's basically in a bank account. Uh, we own, uh, 501 million, uh, of assets and we owe, uh, 225 million, uh, in debt service. So, you know, for, for a household that, that's makes 40,000 a year, uh, that would be equivalent to having 45,000 dollars in, in cash, uh, savings or checking, um, having assets, whether it's your car or your house or whatever, close to 75,000. And, uh, debt, uh, student loans or mortgage or car, car payments, again, uh, close to 33,000. And, and for reference, you know, when we talk about, uh, you know, let's just say the roads, uh, upcoming streets, uh, investment and, and the financing, i- if you added, uh, you know, that level of bond, you're talking about a little over, uh, a thousand, uh, dollars in this analogy. So is that, uh, you know, and, and then you could say, "Well, do you, do you leverage it? Do you take on more debt? Uh, do you, do you spend down some of your cash and savings?" And that's the same question that, that households make every day, whether, you know, are you gonna finance your cellphone, are you gonna finance your car? You may have money in an account at retirement, or you may have money in your, in your bank account in case, uh, or a rainy day fund. Uh, so it, just because you have money in the account doesn't mean it's not the right time to, uh, take out a financing option. And with the interest rates as low as they are, um, you know, this is, this is a great time to, to leverage the strong position we're in and be able to make the progress on, 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 uh, this infrastructure and while still maintaining a good financial position. So I'll quickly, uh, just go over what, uh, what, appreciate the, the common council worked on, uh, throughout, uh, the, the pandemic year and came up with a, a good, uh, budget in, in difficult times. Uh, you know, when we started in the, thinking about the, the impacts of the pandemic in March and April, um, you know, we, we thought things were gonna be significantly worse than, than they ended up, uh, being, at least so far. So there's a lot of, uh, work that, ahead to get back to, to where we wanna be in, in terms of growth and, and economic, uh, conditions, both, uh, as a city government and, and as a community with residents needing opportunities. But, uh, you know, we, we certainly could have fared, uh, far worse and, and we're worried about that. So, uh, you know, the, the public safety is a, is a major portion of our spending. Just, you know, it's very similar to the, the pie chart on, uh, personnel. Public safety is a, a big portion of it. Uh, the public works, uh, team i- is, uh, the next biggest portion. And then, you know, everything else goes, uh, into the, the final little wedge there. And, and we're proud that, uh, we came up with a budget that, uh, 65% of the strategic spending that, that we do, uh, went into neighborhoods. And, uh, as we mentioned before, we have the three-year plan back to a structural balance. Um, and, and this is the breakdown of, of the different funds between, uh, operations capital for, for general government op- for, uh, general government, uh, departments and entities, and then also enterprise, uh, operations and capital. So, you know, we, the, even though it looks like, uh, '21, again, will be the big year, that is us trying to have the smoothest, uh, path to balance in, in 2023, where in actuality, our 2022, when we go to look at the budget for 2022, uh, that is when we will likely see the, the biggest drops in, in, uh, in revenue. And so accordingly, uh, the biggest deficit. But this is for, for our planning purposes, how to get ahead of it and, and make sure that, that. So we did a lot of the hard, a lot of the heavy lifting for the 2021 budget. We've got some more heavy lifting to do for the 2022 budget. And then the, hopefully, uh, if Congress keeps stepping up, the, the economy and the recovery will be in full force by 2023 and we'll be in a good position, uh, back to where we, we wanna get to. And here are the, the highlights of, of where the strategic spending, uh, for 2021 budget. I won't, uh, go into these in detail. Um, this is what was passed, but just here to, to remind what we're hoping to get done, uh, in, in the coming months here in 2021. And then, uh, do, do wanna spend just a brief moment on, uh, higher levels of government and how they may impact, uh, our finances and, and our condition. Um, the, the legislature downstate is, uh, looking at, uh, reducing, what would in effect reduce our, our business, uh, per, personal property, uh, tax, um, receipts. And so, you know, And so, you know, we're not as dependent on that as some other cities around the state, but that would be, you know, a significant impact to, to our, our revenue stream. We are pleased that there, the next three are, are better news in, in terms of revenue. The, the agreement between the state and the Pocagin ban to move toward and allow class three gaming at four wins. We'll continue the South Bend receipts of payment in lieu of taxes. And so Senate Bill 356 is moving forward and, and that maintains our, our revenue agreement with the Pocagin ban. So that, that's good news. Senate Bill 384 is also, has moved out of committee and, and people think is good odds of, of passing this year. And, and that would restore the, the professional sports development area tax for, for us, as well as Evansville and Fort Wayne, I believe. I forget who the third city is. But that'd be good news for us because this is revenue that otherwise would go downstate and would not necessarily find its way back up into our community. So that, that's an exciting bill we're looking to see move forward. And then earlier today in committee, you, you heard about the efforts to, to move the, the hotel motel tax bill downstate, and that's Senate Bill 164, and that has a hearing in committee tomorrow. So we're hopeful that those will move forward and, and help us get, get those, get those investments that are associated with those moving forward as well. And then the, the big piece, of course, is the talks about how to move forward, the Biden administration's rescue plan, whether it's 1.9 trillion or, or one point, you know, 1.2 trillion, where if it, if it's above a trillion, it will likely lead to some, some state and local aid coming our way. And we have not seen any final legislation or, or even draft legislation for that plan. But if it's mirrored off of the, if the state and local aid is mirrored off of the Heroes Act that passed the House last year, it would mean direct money coming to South Bend at some point to help cover the holes we anticipate, particularly due to the income tax fund. And then we, we all know our, our former mayor is, is now Secretary of Transportation, and transportation is expected to be a high priority of the administration. And a, a large infrastructure package may finally get done by Congress. And this is something like tax reform is talked about in every Congress, and you know, it happens every now and then. Infrastructure is talked about every administration in Congress, and it hasn't happened for a while. So we're hopeful that this will be the, this will be the Congress that, that finally makes a substantial investment in, in our, in our infrastructure. And so we would hope to be competitive to, and be lined up to, to figure out how to be competitive for those funding opportunities. And then finally, upcoming items, the vaccine rollout is underway and we'll need to continue to do outreach, as we discussed during the, the last council meeting, to communities of color in particular. And I want to thank the council members and council leadership for helping us work on that and figure out how to get the message out. And we'll have more on that in the coming days. And then economic recovery, we're focused like a laser on how do we get through this last part of, of the pandemic and get to the other side where we really do hope that there will be, you know, people back together, people pent up demand in terms of, of spending as well. Some people have been able to save who were fortunate enough to maintain their incomes during the pandemic but didn't have as many things to do. So, you know, we're hopeful that when we do get, when we get the all clear and the safe go-ahead, there will be a, a good rebound and, and growth opportunity for, for us here, both locally and, and nationally. Do want to finalize the, the streets plan that we unveiled the draft a, a week ago? And, you know, any, any comments from council members would love to get those, to make sure we have all the, the streets included that we should be including, and then look forward to, to moving on the plan to, to finance it and get the jumpstart this year as we progress through the three-year plan to, to get back on track. Also, we'll be working, hope to work a, a lot with the council on developing our, our longer-term utility capital and operations plan. And we've talked about solid waste. I mean, that's, that, that's on the operations side. We have to do something. We're also starting to get into a similar position as, as where we found ourselves last year with our, our police department, where we're having trouble retaining our, our drivers, our truck drivers for solid waste. And we know that our wage has fallen probably to be not competitive with the market to, to make sure that we can recruit and retain our, our, our drivers. So not only are we in the hole on operations, but we also need to really take a look at how do we, how do we get the, our drivers' situation stabilized? As well as, you know, there, there have been changes to service levels over the past few years, trying to save every penny that we can. And, you know, some of that has been out of necessity, but some of that may be things that from a policy level, the council and the administration would maybe like to see go in a different direction. So there are a lot of conversations with solid waste. Obviously, the long-term control plan will be by far the big, it's a, to, even the, the cheaper version that we hope to get approved by the federal government is still talking about close to $300 million of new investment over the next couple decades. So, you know, that's a, one of the bigger things we'll have to deal with. And as part of this whole package, we're going to have to work to see, you know, what is equitable and what is fair to pay for the infrastructure that we desperately need to invest in. And a part of that is, is taking a look at the, the customer assistance program and seeing where that should be. And I appreciate that we weren't ready to act on that at the end of December, but that needs to be part of the mix because we need to fund our infrastructure and we can't squeeze people who don't have dollars to do so. So we're going to have to work together to, to make sure that we have a plan to, to invest in our critical infrastructure while also maintaining fairness and not, not causing our residents to, to go into financial distress due to our, our infrastructure needs. We'll, we'll continue to implement the 21 CP recommendations, and that's something, you know, maybe in, in March or, or April, we can come back to council and, and provide an update on. I know next item is, I believe, on the agenda for next meeting at the end of February, so I won't go too much into that. And then we're also moving forward with the inclusive procurement program that had passed at the end of 2019. And finally, all the pieces seem to be firing, but there, there will be some, some things to, to work on together on that. And then finally, we're, we're also getting firing in, in all directions over with our neighborhoods teams and want to work with council on what, what, what to do there and, and what we can get done here over the, the next few years. And so with that, I will take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I will start with first this, this comment. I have a half, half. Candidly.
Thank you, President White and Mayor Mueller. Thank you for that presentation. My, my question is, what is, what is going to be the economic impact of the street plans? How, are, are, can you talk more about the street plans?
I mean, you know, when, when you look at, at our, the condition of our streets across the city, for one, you, you will see some, some neighborhoods have fare better in terms of quality of infrastructure than others. But the, the level and service level of our infrastructure is also what, what can drive investment or desirability. And so, you know, if we think of, of, of a block, for example, one like we were at last week, when you're going to, you know, when someone is looking to invest money, whether, you know, homeowner or, you know, if you had your choice of where to invest and, you know, the, the, you know, if a house was the same or a lot was, was similar, you know, you would probably pick the one with, you know, what's called curb appeal, right? A little, something that, that seems cared for and, and up to date. So there's that piece. There's the equity piece of making sure that we're maintaining our, our infrastructure across the entire city in an equitable manner. But then there's also just the, the impact of, of how investment goes and how, you know, even when you think of financing from, from lending institutions, that all factors into it in terms of, of appraisal values. And then finally going to, you know, what we've heard a lot of residents, and I won't name any names, but there's a member of the council that's had damage done to their car due to the condition of our roads. And so not, not causing damage to private, your personal private property are bills that our residents won't have to incur due to, due to road conditions.
And then my second question is, one of our major things will be rebuilding vibrant neighborhoods. To the average person, what does that mean?
Well, the vibrance, the vibrant neighborhoods is, first of all, what we're talking about is a, a level of service in, in neighborhood infrastructure. So that level of, of the conditions of, the physical conditions of the, of the neighborhood. And then you layer on top of that amenities available and services. So a lot of that will come from the private sector. But we know, they're well, we're well documented that there are food deserts in our city where it's hard to get access to, to, to groceries in different parts of the city, or harder in some than others. And, and that's something, that's a service that's provided by the private sector, but we need to figure out how can we incentivize or drive greater service levels across the city. So when we're talking about vibrant neighborhoods, a vibrant neighborhood is something we aspire to for all of our neighborhoods where you have good infrastructure, you have a, a good stable housing stock within the neighborhood, and you have services within a reasonable distance to be able to live your life and, and thrive. So that's, that's what we envision for every neighborhood. Of course, we know that the, the market by itself will not always drive into that direction. And so we have to figure out how to help, help incentivize that equity. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll now move to Second District Representative, Councilman Henry Davis Jr.
Yes. James Merriman, glad to have you. I wish you would have been on the call or the meeting earlier during our committee hearing. I don't know if you were privy to that. And before I get started, that was my car that was damaged. It was damaged twice, destroyed my front end and the rim, and then I went back down another street and destroyed the other rim. It just wasn't a good year.
I was going to out you, but yeah, you, you.
I think I told them that. Yeah. Because there's some frustration that came from that. It was a lot of money. But anyhow, the meeting that we had earlier really concentrated on how this is going to look between the school and the city. Now, I had a resolution, you were privy to it, and we talked briefly about it, and you gave your comments on it as well. And so I, I get it, and I think we got it too. We continued it over until the last meeting in March. Hopefully, the things that were talked about in the committee hearing does happen in between. I, I think my question for you with that, it has to do with your level of participation, because I heard you say something about, it was some type of like, um, group that's already meeting? If I, if I have it right?
Yeah, the, the superintendent has a group.
Okay. Are we included in that conversation?
I do not have a full list of who's on that. I'm, I'm actually not on that, that group, but I did encourage them during the, the process last spring to develop a, a community advisory group that brought, brought the stakeholders beyond just the ones they normally engage with. So I do not have a full list. That's something we can work to, to get.
So what happens is this, that the council itself recognizes the need for partnership because of the way it impacts the community neighborhoods, not necessarily the educational track of each student that goes to the South Bend School Corporation. I think there's a shared conversation in there, and I hope that you will be a part of the conversations as we move forward because they are very important. I can't get into the conversation about the education because that's not my lane. But when we begin to talk about closing schools, that is my lane because that creates some changes in our tax base and our neighborhoods and property value and development. So I think that those will, excuse me, I know that those two conversations do go together. We just have to figure out how to marry them. So I, I know that the conversation goes back to the Community Relations Committee, and so I'm looking forward to hearing more about it, and I hope that you will participate so that we can get a handle on future planning and how this is going to work out. My second question, sir, has something to do with the $25 million that's getting ready to be invested for the street repair. We don't, we do not have set size in Indiana, the last time I checked, but they may be there now. I need to know if we can, if you're interested or have the appetite to create a program that allows people of color, mainly black and Hispanic, brown folks, to participate on these contracts? We have to be able to let, allow other members of the community to share in the promise of South Bend. There was over $100 million invested, I'm sure you know about this, and, and less than 1% of the money went to minority contractors, which is a travesty because that's less than $1 million. And in order for us to become the city that's inclusive of all races and all people, the money has to be shared. So I'm asking you, is there any appetite in your end to create a program to ensure that success?
Absolutely. And that's, you know, when, when I talked about inclusive procurement, that's, that's what I was talking about, is once and for all, finally getting that program in place and making sure that we can, can have those opportunities for, for all of our residents. So that, that's what that's about. I, I will say, this is something that you know too, is, is been going, you know, been talked about, things have been, you know, for decades, to be honest. So we think we're at, we're, this is the year where we can finally move that forward in a real way. There are some, some things that we, we would like to work with council on to, to make that work, but there are, there have been a lot of legal complexities as well as just operational complexities. We do think we've worked through those finally and should have that up and running. And there are other avenues too, on projects that, that we're open to exploring, not just through, you know, this inclusive procurement board process, but there, there are other things that, that are, other tools available to us that, that we'd be open to exploring as well.
Well, it's coming, so we got to make sure it happens.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. We'll now move to Councilwoman Sharon McBride, Third District Representative. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. No questions, just a couple of statements. I want to thank the mayor for the presentation and along with administration and the council for being fiscally responsible, especially during these trying times. And just want to make sure that we're keeping at the forefront. I know we got a lot of shifting to do, a lot of priorities due to COVID and our economy, but just want to make sure that we are continuing to be intentional and deliberate with making sure that we are still. that we are still showing diversity and inclusion and not forgetting about, you know, the brown and black communities and the women businesses and minority contractors as well to make sure that we continue out with what we set forth to do. And I'll yield with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to Fourth District Representative, Councilman Troy Warner.
Thank you. I'm gonna do like Councilmember McBride. I don't have any questions, but a few comments. I think first, I echo Councilman Davis's comments on inclusive contracting and, um, let's see some real results this year coming from the, the inclusive contracting group that you put together. It's vital. It, it has to happen, right? And then next, I want to commend you and the rest of the city staff on the, the programs that have been put together and implemented during this pandemic. You know, some of us council members, you know, we got to see some rental assistance. We've got to see some help with utilities. There are people in the community that have been just crippled by this, business owners, employees. And I commend you and the staff for putting together those programs and, and getting help out to people that need it. And the restaurant program also. So I commend you for your work and the work of your, your team on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to Fifth District Representative, Councilman Eli Wax.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for joining us. A quick question regarding federal aid and how much that, how much your, depending on that, or your three-year budget plan. You know, you mentioned that if the bill from Congress or whatever comes out is over a trillion, you expect a portion would be allocated to cities and states. If, if that doesn't happen, or we don't see the relief from the federal government, have you started to crunch some numbers and figure out what the city's recovery may look like?
Thank, thank you for that question, Councilmember Wax. And, and this is, when we went through the budget process, which I understand you, you joined late in the year, we, we, I worked in Congress, you know, for Senator Cantwell for a number of years. And I learned at that time, you can't count on Congress to do anything ever, for the most part. So the plan that we have in place does not count on Congress acting. Now, what will happen, you know, we have to, we, we found about $4 million to cut for this year budget. And we would need to find another $4 million, you know, in, in operations for, for next year's budget to go on the plan that we've talked about so far. But what the, the, what congressional action could do is make some of these tougher choices a little bit easier. You know, I think, you know, it's a one-time payment, so it doesn't change structure. Like, the best thing we can do, I, I mean, the most important thing Congress can do is get us back to growth, get us back to full employment, make investments that aren't one-time payments but are actually growth-minded, because that's what gets us sustainable, is, is having growth in incomes across the board, having, you know, growth in, in valuations across the board. So, you know, it's, it's, but assuming we have a strong recovery, let's just, I guess, let's be hopeful and say that we're gonna do the things we need to do to have, you know, closer to that strong rebound. Then, then I think we're on a sustainable, you know, track. If we find, you know, we're gonna have to do some, some, make some tough choices going into 2022. But we should be able to do that. Now, if they, you know, if, if they provide aid, that, that may take a little bit more, give us a little more breathing room as we look to, to implement those.
Thank you, Mayor. And then you talked about direct investments into neighborhoods. I wanted to know if you could elaborate on that a little bit, what some of those previous expenditures were and what you're looking forward to in the future.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I don't know the full list that goes into, you're talking about the, the 60-some percent number, the strategic spending?
Yeah, I mean, I think there was a number of maybe 28 million, and I don't have it in front of me. But I'm not asking, I'm not asking for the whole breakdown, just for.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, so that, that includes, that includes, I think, both, when, when we go through the budget process, we also split strategic spending into operations and capital. So that will include a lot of the neighborhood's operations teams that go into that. So whether a priority of council in the last few years has been on, you know, making sure code enforcement is able to do rental safety inspections. So those kind of strategic operations line items go into that number. But then also the capital investments as well, whether it's, you know, our Light Up South Bend program that, that the council members have, have championed over the years, the curbs and sidewalks, as well as some of our more focused neighborhood plan implementation. So, you know, when we do the, the neighborhood plans, there, there's oftentimes a lot of infrastructure components to it. And so this, that line item would include some of the work that, that has been going on, you know, in the southeast neighborhood or the West Side Main Streets plan, or other plans that goes, that would go into that final number. And then I believe some of the neighborhood parks, not the, not the giant park, you know, not the major park investments, but some of the, the smaller neighborhood parks, line items would, would fall under that as well. So it's a, it's looking, you know, when, when, when Dan, our controller splits up the, the budget, when he looks at strategic spending, it's, it's those pieces. And we can, he'll be happy to, to break that down in, in full detail with you if you're interested. So, and, and we'll do it during budget time. Whether you're interested or not, we'll do it during budget time anyway. So, you know, whenever you're, you're wanting to dive deep into that, let us know.
Okay, will do. I'm looking forward to some parks on the southeast side, like you mentioned.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you. We'll now move to Sixth District Representative, Sheila Nisgotsky.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Mayor Mueller, for your presentation tonight. I just had a question when you went over the presentation about leveraging debt in, in projects and how that debt had dropped down. And I assume that when you leverage debt, it's through bonds. And being that the bond market is at historic lows, we have a double A rating, what would that interest rate look at right now for us to make an investment in our city with that? Is it a percent, less than a percent? I mean, I would imagine it's pretty low at this point.
Yeah, it's, it's very low. It'll depend on exactly, you know, for, so for example, when we're looking at the streets plan, that's a, that's contemplated out of, out of the income tax fund. So each, you know, each source of revenue has its own security level in, in the bond market. So when we did our, our capital lease last year, I don't know if, if Dan's on the line, but it was close to a percent, I believe, at that time for, for that, that level of debt and that, you know, securitization. I think it would be, we're expecting it to be higher than that for, for this, this, this potential issuance. But yes, it's, it's gonna be very, you know, if you think of inflation rates, you know, normal inflation rates or, you know, you know, cost adjustments, it's, it's gonna be in that neighborhood. And that's, in many ways, by design. The Federal Reserve, to, to get through this, this period of economic difficulty, i- is almost trying to pay you to borrow money, because they want to encourage investment. And so because that's the design of, of our monetary policy, that's why we see these historically low rates.
Thank you. In my second question, when I looked at that health insurance cost, it looked like an increase of around $3 million, which I'm gonna guess was to do to the overwhelming need for healthcare this past year, and Senate Bill 336. So health care's went up. If they take that business property, personal tax and that bill passes, is there an estimate of what the loss to the city would be for that?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I don't know if Dan's on the line and does. It's, they've changed the structure of it too. So, you know, if they took it all away, you know, it's gonna be a much bigger number. They're talking, you know, they're working on modifying it and maybe having some, you know, adding exemptions, but not completely getting rid of it. So we can get, if Dan doesn't have that, if he's not on the line and doesn't have that off the top of his head, we can get that in the next day or so.
Well, thank you. I was just, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Nisgotsky, this is Dan Parker, City Controller. I don't have the, the number off the top of my head either, but I, I will get the analysis and send it to council on the next day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the at-large council members, Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for your presentation and taking the time to be with us this evening. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. We'll now move to Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for being with us this evening and for your very thorough and comprehensive presentation. I just had a quick question, wanting, a quick reaction from you about the Indiana Senate's override of Governor Holcomb's veto of the housing bill that he had vetoed last year and what kind of direct impact we'll see in our own community.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a, we, I didn't focus on all of the problematic things that I would generally classify as a war on cities from the state legislature. And, and this is one of those, the, the, trying to preempt the, the ability for landlord registration or, or other types of landlord accountability measures that, that cities desperately need to, to protect their residents. So that's one, you know, there's the wetlands bill that, that went through. That's not necessarily fully, you know, on the city's package, but, you know, it's something that, that, you know, need to monitor and wonder, you know, where, where are we going as a state? But there are others, you know, there, there's looking at, you know, telling us how, how we can or cannot budget our public safety departments, looking at whether we can have requirements for responsible bidders at Board of Public Works. So they've already, you know, they, it's, it's about, we're supposedly have home rule as a city, except when, when we start to do things that, that they're, they don't like, then, then there seems to be no longer home rule and, and preemption. And, and that's, throughout the years, we, we've seen that on a number of issues. So this is one that, that's concerning. It, it probably does and will impact our programming here in, in South Bend. But it's, we were, you know, it was, it was a bit of a relief when, when the governor vetoed it last year. We did know, I mean, we knew that, one, the threshold for overriding the veto in the state is, is low. It's, it's the same threshold as, as passing in the first place and that there would be a substantial probably support for, for getting it through at some point. So we're told that there will be clarifying amendments passed after the, you know, they've overridden the veto and, you know, that has to go through. I don't know if that happened on the House yet. But, so they'll override the veto and then they'll make some policy changes after that. And so really, the, how this all pans out will depend on what are the changes that, that move forward here in the, in the coming weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I would like to thank the council members for your questions and also the mayor for the excellent presentation. This is a great kickoff as we be, get prepared for the upcoming budget process. Also, I would like to ask that if we could get a copy, each council member could get a copy of the presentation so that we can place it on our website, but we can have it for our reference as well.
Of course, yep.
Okay. Thank you again for a very excellent presentation. And it puts a lot of the, there's challenges that we have before us, but also it gives us a quick overview in terms of the priorities that we established during this previous budget process and moving forward. So thank you again, and your department heads, and also Mr. Dan Parker and his staff.
Thank you, President White.
Thank you so much. And now we'll move to the Committee of the Whole. We'd like to entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion? Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgotsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you today that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meetings and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Jones, we're gonna start with bill number 7120. Will you please give bill 7120 a second reading?
Yes. 7120, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1643 Prairie.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. This came before the zoning committee this afternoon and is brought forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you, Council. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. Today before you is a special exception, a request. This is a special exception because this property here outlined is Zoned NC Neighborhood Center. And in that zoning district, a gas station is a special exception where you have to go through this process and get final approval from council. This property is located along Prairie Avenue, just as Prairie Avenue jogs to the southwest, heads towards the casino, and then further out of town. It's actually at a pretty interesting corner in the city, right where Dubell, Oliver, and Prairie meet, forming this pretty unique intersection. Currently on site is a vacant former gas station, auto repair shop, and then also another lot that is vacant field as well. And it is located in the sixth council district. Here is the view of the property from that intersection. As you can see, the vacant auto shop present there and the former parking lot. And here is looking to the southwest. You can see the alley that borders the property to the north, the vacant field, and then the abandoned auto shop. This went to the Board of Zoning Appeals last month for the request of a special exception. But it also included three variances from the zoning ordinance. One of those was to have two curb cuts instead of one as the ordinance prescribes. The other was to have the building placed much further back than the zoning ordinance would like to see for Neighborhood Center. That, that ordinance, even though the building exists, the petitioner wished to expand the building. So because it was being expanded, and it was being expanded in a way away from the way the ordinance reads, that required the variance of both of those. There was a third variance that was accepted, but those two variances were denied. But the special exception comes to you with a favorable recommendation, purely for the use, that comes to you with a favorable recommendation, which is all that the council votes on. But due to those variances being denied, the site plan. those variances, uh, being denied, the site plan was adjusted by the petitioner, uh, to reflect that. Uh, now we just have one, um, curb cut, uh, coming off the alley, uh, as far away from the intersection as possible. Uh, staff, both planning and engineering, were very concerned about the, uh, continued existence of the curb cut right at this busy intersection, um, especially with the type of traffic that a gas station usually produces. Um, so that was the first change, a major change to the site plan. And then the second change was, uh, very clearly moving the building, uh, right up along the street, the way, uh, that, uh, the Neighborhood Center District envisions, uh, properties to be aligned, a much more urban, uh, type environment that provides, uh, much better streetscape that will look nicer along the street and not, uh, so urban looking. And also, uh, if I can neatly, uh, match this building here, which has a similar, um, outlook towards the street. Uh, this did have a, uh, unfavorable recommendation from staff at the BZA level, um, but the BZA still sent it forward with a favorable recommendation to you. And then with the changes, uh, that would have, if the changes would have come before the BZA hearing, uh, we, we believe staff would have been favorable as well at that point. Um, I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions that you might have. Um, and I'm, I believe the petitioner is here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Um, council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Okay, seeing none at this point, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7120?
Did you want me to talk about the site plan at all? It's Mike Dance.
Um, I've already started to go into the, um, if you would like to make a comment after I close the...
No problem.
Is there anyone here to speak, um, against, oh, I'm sorry, Clerk Jones, is there anyone to speak in favor of the bill?
Um, no, I do not see anyone, um, wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone, uh, wishing to speak against the bill?
I do not see anyone wishing to speak against the bill as well. Okay, thank you. Well, at this point then, the public hearing on, or President White, um, before I close the public hearing, can I give Mr. Dance an opportunity to speak about the site plans?
Please do, because then he can speak to the site plan and that if there are any, the public hearing portion has not been closed, correct?
I have not closed it yet.
So if there's anyone that may have some questions of him, they will have that opportunity.
Wonderful, thank you. I wasn't sure, since I've already started that proceeding, if that was acceptable or not. So, Mr. Dance, would you please proceed with the site plan? Thank you.
Sure, I appreciate that. Mike Dance from Dance, Harnett and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. As Joe had mentioned, uh, we had gone through the Board of Zoning Appeals and had requested the approval of a special exception. As part of that process, what ended up happening is with the denial of a couple of the variances, we came back and redesigned the entire site to match what the intent of the Board of Zoning Appeals had asked us to do. And as Joe had mentioned in this particular case, what that ended up being is, is that the existing out-of-date building that was on the property will be razed completely from the site, and we will build a brand-new convenience store of approximately 3,900 square feet that you see on the site plan before you. That building will be up right at the street right of way, which is meeting the requirements for the NC District, which is more pedestrian-oriented type of zoning. So the building will sit right at the property line. What we also did then was move the canopy with the fueling pumps to the north side of the building as part of the, uh, other requirements for the Board of Zoning Appeals. They had asked us, uh, to only have one entranceway onto this particular site. What we ended up doing to make that work with this piece of property was we took the, uh, public alley, which is 14-foot wide, and we expanded it into a 24-foot wide driveway, 14 for the public alley and 10-foot on our property, to give us a full access width out to Prairie Avenue and for patrons that would come into the site, as well as for a fueling truck that would come in to fuel the, the, uh, fuel tanks underneath the canopy. Uh, what we also have added was additional landscaping, uh, on the buffer areas along the residential to the west of the site and southwest of the site. Um, all lighting is going to meet the, uh, latest requirements for the city so that there will be no light spillage onto any adjacent property. What we will also be doing is bringing this entire site up to the drainage standards for the city of South Bend so that any surface runoff created by this particular site will stay on the site, um, which is not happening presently for the property. What the contingent person would like to do here is probably an investment of about a million and a half dollars to do what you see before you. We would hope that council will give us, uh, the favorable approval for that special exception. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dance. Uh, Clerk Jones, do you see anybody wishing to speak for or against?
No, no one has, uh, expressed interest to speak for or against this bill.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. Um, then I'm going to, uh, at this time, close the public portion. Um, so, yeah, so at this point, the public, uh, hearing on Bill 7120 is now closed. Uh, would there be any council member that would wish to make any statements regarding the bill?
Councilman, uh, Ca- Kenneth Lee?
Well, we said it in the committee meetings earlier today, but I, it's just great to see investment in that area over on Prairie. Um, it's, it's, it's starting to boom with the casino and, and all of that over there. So to see that someone has taken the time to invest in a gas station and, um, investing in that area, it, it's, it's good to see in a positive, uh, is, is, is just a positive, um, opportunity. So thank you, uh, for investing in that community, and, uh, we look forward to it being prosperous and, uh, continue to develop that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Is there any other council members that wish to speak or make a statement? Councilman Warner?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dance. I think this is now the third project in a row where we started with a Plan A and, uh, you've been very amenable to, uh, all the city concerns, and, uh, I, I thank you and commend you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Warner. Is there any other council members that would like to make a statement?
Uh, well, I would like to make a statement, being that I'm the sixth district council member that, um, and I would like to thank you for making those needed changes, um, and making that a safe, uh, corner for pedestrians and for traffic, um, and for the investment to the district. I have a feeling that that may help, uh, spur some other development, which is, uh, very welcome. So I would like to thank you for your presentation and thank you for the investment in our community.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, but I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 7120. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we move Bill 7120 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second that motion.
Thank you. The bill has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysgotsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Thank you, Mr. Dance.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysgotsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to resolve from the Committee of the Whole to report back to the full council. So moved.
Second.
I thought we just did that.
Point of order, I, that, that's what my motion was.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. I thought we were voting on something else. I apologize. Well, now the full council is back in session. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 71-20 a third reading?
Yes. 7120, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the Property Located at 1643 Prairie.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Councilwoman Nysgotsky, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill 71-20?
Yes, President White, it came out with a favorable recommendation, recommendation with a nine-o vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding Bill 71-20 at this time?
I'd like to make a motion to move to, call for passage.
Second.
For passage.
I think I heard a second. That was Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Yes.
Um, thank you. We have a motion and ha- and there is a second to that motion. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Nysgotsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 71-20 has passed. We're now entering into the resolution portion of our meeting. We'd just like to note once again that, uh, Resolution 21-3 will be con- will have been tabled until March 22nd. And I don't believe that we have to take a, uh, motion on that. I want to make sure before I move forward. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Palmer. We'll now move to Resolution 21-04. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 21-04?
Yes. 21-04, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, Commonly Known as 1915 North Bendix Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, An Economic Revitalization Area For Purposes Of A Five-Year Personal Property Tax Abatement For Royal Adhesives Insilence LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President White. This came to Community Investment and, and goes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We'll now move to the presentation, uh, portion. We will first have comments from Community Investment, uh, Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer, followed by the presenter. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, President White. This is Dan Buckenmeyer, uh, Director of Business Development, uh, offices on the 14th floor of the city-county building. Uh, so we're coming to you tonight with, uh, a request for a tax abatement for HB, uh, well, uh, Royal Adhesives, uh, better known to some as HB Fuller, uh, longtime South Bend business. Um, we have done, uh, abatements for them in the past, and they're ca- uh, they have, have not only cash positive on those now, but, uh, have met all their commitments, of course, on those in the past. For this one, we're looking at, uh, one of two locations. This location, again, 1915 Bendix, it's, uh, Bendix Road, uh, immediately east of the airport. Um, they want to expand their operations there to, um, uh, allow for the aerosolization of and packaging of adhesives that they manufacture here in South Bend. Um, I, I love pointing out, we love a win here in South Bend. I love pointing out the fact that they considered, uh, another location in Houston, Texas as a possibility for this. Um, they ultimately decided to do this in South Bend for reasons I'll let Mr. Greenley, uh, petitioner, get into. Um, but we're thrilled that they've done so. Um, it, you know, makes South Bend the center of, uh, um, uh, just more of their verticalization of their, uh, business, uh, operations here and amplifies the impact of their South Bend operations on their, uh, national and, and even global, uh, distribution. Um, they will be investing in, sorry, let me advance my slides here. Uh, are we seeing the slides? Did I do that right, Elise? Okay. Um, 1.3 million dollar investment in, uh, this, uh, and, and again, it's a private, um, uh, I'm sorry, personal property investment, so not a real estate investment, but capital equipment that's going to allow them to do this. Uh, oh, million-three in, in, in set investment. Uh, we talked about filling the cylinders and the aerosolization of that. Uh, they serve roofing in industrial markets. Uh, no current taxes on these, uh, because they don't exist at this moment. Um, they, uh, over the course of the five years, so this will be a five-year abatement, which is the common, uh, time period for private, uh, I'm sorry, it's a private, personal property tax abatements. Um, and over that course, they still will pay, uh, about, uh, sixteen thou- uh, thousand dollars in property taxes. These are estimates, as we all know. They'll pay about, uh, I'm sorry, they will, uh, we will abate about eighty, eighty-two thousand dollars in, in taxes to allow them to, um, cushion the blow of this, uh, you know, million-dollar, million-three-dollar, and actually more, that they're investing in the, the local operations, which again, I'll let Mr. Greenley get into. But, uh, um, we're thrilled to support this and, and hope council will support this. I also just wanted to point out, uh, not that this is necessarily part of the abatement, but I, I thank, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas Morgan for, for keying something that, uh, is in the petition that, that we wouldn't normally bring out, but, um, uh, because again, it's not a requirement per se, but they're a great track record over the last few years in terms of hiring and, oh, uh, 49, uh, minority and women, um, uh, hires in, in the firm over that course of the last couple of years, few years, and, uh, just a great track record and something that we appreciate, uh, here in the city and, and as part of, um, the goodwill and, and, uh, positive trends in terms of those seeking, uh, city support. So with that, I'll stop and allow Mr. Randy Greenley to step in and say a few words and then open up the question.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Randy Greenley, um, with Royal Adhesive Insilence, and I'm an operation director there. And, um, and my address, my office address is 2001 West Washington Street. So, anyway, I think Dan covered everything, uh, pretty well. Um, yeah, we are spending about 1.3 million on, um, equipment, and I think our total spend's about 2.1. Um, and the way we got here is he, he alluded to, uh, looking at a, um, Houston as well. They're another company of HB Fuller, uh, Royal Adhesive. Um, and the reason why we, we were looking at, they make adhesive, a liquid adhesive, um, in Houston. South Bend makes an adhesive, uh, a liquid adhesive in, uh, at that plant, the main plant. And then we have a third party that, um, that fills the canisters. So it's, it's basically, um, adhesive and a couple of propellants that, that go into that canister. So, um, you know, I personally worked with the city of South Bend on, uh, previous projects, and Ted Clark, who I used to report to when I was VP of Ops, um, also worked with the city of South Bend, and, uh, we, the two of us really supported moving this operation to South Bend. And, in, in, in reality too, logistically- And in reality, too, logistically, it just made more sense because the third party's in another state. But everything, once those canisters are filled by the third party, they come back to the Bendix warehouse anyway and get shipped out. So it just made more sense to do that. And I think, you know, there's, I think it's a win-win for both parties. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to save some money, too, on each canister. I think it's about $25 a canister. We're also adding, you know, six more jobs in the first phase, the second phase, another additional five people. That, the second phase is actually aerosol can filling. So like the cans, 13-ounce cans you see in Lowe's or Home Depot. And then there's a third phase for a two-part urethane that R&amp;D is developing. And we're, we're going to spend some money on that, too. It's like 115. That second phase was like $672,000. So we're going to continue to grow. The main plant has been growing and adding people. So appreciate your support on this tax abatement.
Thank you, Mr. Greenlee. Before moving to the public hearing portion, council members, do you have any questions that you would like to ask the petitioner or Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer? Any questions from council members? I'll circle back after the public hearing portion where we will have comments from council members. I do not see any hands going up, so I will move directly to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21-04?
I do not see anyone in the chat room wishing to speak on, in support of Resolution 2104.
Seeing that there's no one waiting to speak in support or in opposition, the public hearing portion is now closed. I will go back to council members. Would you like to make any comments regarding Resolution 21-4 at this time? I do see a hand. Councilmember Kenneth Lee?
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Dan, and thank you, Mr. Greenlee. As I was, as I said in committee meetings, as we've said at the various times that we've had to look at this, this company, it is great to see that they fought to keep this in South Bend and not let it go to Houston. Had the opportunity to walk the facility and, and it's, they, it's a big building. And it was a big building sitting over in the first district that was empty. And so we're certainly glad that somebody is breathing life over in that area and that empty building and giving them an opportunity to invest big time in the first district. The jobs that he spoke of, it's going to make an impact, good-paying jobs. And we even had a chance to talk to some of the workers that was working over there and they, they seemed like they liked Randy. So we're excited about it. So I just want to say thank you, Randy, and to Royal Adhesives for fighting for South Bend and keeping it in South Bend. And we're, we want to see great things grow out of this. So thank you as the first district council person that we have a big building that was sitting empty that is not going to be sitting empty and it's, they're already filling it up right now. So we're excited about it. So thank you.
Thank you, too, Kenneth.
Thank you as well. Do we have any other council members who would like to make any comments at this time? I do not see any hands up.
I move for passage.
We have a motion to move for passage. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Council, Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution 21-04 has passed. And again, we thank the Department of Community Investment and of course, the petitioner, Mr. Greenlee, for your commitment to the city of South Bend. We'll now move to bills first reading. We do not have any bills for first reading. Is there any unfinished business? Councilmembers, any unfinished business? We'll now move to new business. Councilmembers, is there any new business? Councilmember Troy Warner?
Thank you, President White. I had also asked Mr. Ray to have some numbers for the, on the progress of the restaurant grants that the Chamber of Commerce is distributing. We kind of ran out of time and he forgot to give those. So as of right now, there are 47 grants, 47 checks have been mailed out. I know there were over 250 restaurants on the list. These are all small neighborhood, family-owned restaurants. He asked for help from us getting out and letting restaurants know in our area. I've been out three times now, out walking restaurant to restaurant. I plan to do like 10 or 12 and then once I get started, they, hey, try this dessert, have a glass of wine, try this. So I don't ever get as many done in the evening as I think. But I know about 10 or 12 in the fourth district have already gotten their grants. They got the checks from about two days after they applied. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. There's $2,000 checks. Basically, all they have to do is type up a paragraph on how the pandemic has affected their business. And it's easy to do for folks. So he asked for help getting that word out to restaurants. I know Caleb sent out a list and an Excel sheet. I printed the list and highlighted the ones in the fourth. And then just take a flyer with, and say, hey, there's a $2,000 check. Get on this link. The application takes about 10 minutes to do. It's very easy. And then, you know, the checks come two days later, so. That's money they want to get rid of, so they need help getting the word out. And the second thing is, we had a lot of discussion on the schools. I have started watching the school board meetings. They're both on their website and on Facebook. I encourage, on the January 25th meeting, there was the presentation of rightsizing that was given to the school board by the superintendents, the school administration, the superintendent's office. I encourage you to go back to that January 25th meeting. It's towards the end. There's a presentation on the school rightsizing and the plan to close these two schools. There's a lot of good information there. I think we'll answer some folks' questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next council person is Councilmember Eli Wax, followed by Councilmember Henry Davis Jr.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Warner. Was a flyer prepared ultimately? I know there was some emails about it, but I didn't see a final flyer. Do you know where I would pick one up?
There was, yeah. I'll check my email. If not, we can make sure that the administration sends it back out to you. It came from Caleb, so I'll get, talk to Caleb.
Maybe I just missed it. Okay, thank you.
Well, now move to Councilmember Henry Davis Jr.
Thank you. I wanted to, you know, I just want to clarify here. We have a length to fill. I get that the school corporation has done their homework for their schools. But because we are the governing body of the city of South Bend, all things are taken into account when we are trying to develop the city, whether it's a school there or not. So if I'm listening to the school corporation and their presentation on why they're doing what they're doing, it's going to make sense because that's what they're doing. I'm not against what they're doing. What I am interested in is making sure and ensuring successful growth when they do whatever they do because it's going to impact all people. So I want to make sure that that's being clarified and in discussion. It seems like it keeps going back to they're doing their work. I got that. I'm saying what they're doing is going to impact. If you don't want to believe me, let's take a ride through the second district and you will see what I mean because it's very clear how that works. The other thing that I want to point to, if you sell a house on the south side of town, and no one has to answer this, if you sell a house on the south side of town, how do you tell families the closest grade school is in Penn Harris-Madison School District? I'm talking about people living in South Bend have to go to Penn Harris-Madison School District because we can't service them. I, I'm done.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that would like to share any, I think I was at new business? I don't see any other hands up. If not, I'll move to the privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor?
At this time, there is no one waiting to speak under privilege of the floor. I don't know if you want to give it a couple more minutes, but there's...
I will ask one more time. Is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor? Clerk Jones, is there anyone that you see?
No, I do not see anyone in the chat room waiting to speak on privilege of the floor.
Thank you. The privilege of the floor is now closed. The council member, I mean, the council meeting is adjourned. I would encourage everyone to stay safe, warm, and healthy as we continue to do the work that we've been elected to do. Have a peaceful night and see each and every one of you soon.
Thank you, President White.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night, everyone. Thank you, President White.
Thank you, thank all of you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night. Thank you.
Eli, those flyers, if the clerk's office can print them all for you?
Actually, yeah, Councilmember Thomas Morgan graciously just emailed me. She's sent me a link and said she's in the office, so she'll print me out a stack. We have a wonderful group to work with here.